All right, good evening. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting in the Madison Board of Selectmen to order on March 11th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the record show also what I'm in the present. Letter C, Consent Agenda Warrant Number 22-225-19, number 23-225-19, payroll registers number 9-2-228-19, and number 10-37-19. I have a motion to accept the payroll, excuse me, payroll and warrants as read. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All in favor, the motion carries. Letter D, Acceptance of the Meeting Minutes from February 25th, 2019. We have a motion in second to accept the meeting minutes of February 25th, 2019. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All in favor, the motion carries. Letter E, New Business. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to discuss creation of a tax increment financing district for Woodlands Senior Living of Madison. At this time, the public hearing is open.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I would like to invite Matthew Walters with Woodlands Senior Living to come, and he will work through a brief presentation to explain what the Woodlands facilities are and how they operate, and then I will provide a bit of information about the TIF that we're talking about in general for this project. But Matthew, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. I know it's always a little dicey this time of year whether the weather's going to cooperate, but I really appreciate you coming out and giving us the opportunity to present a project that we're very excited about. Been asked to give a little overview of our organization for those that don't know a lot about us. We started the business in 1980. Actually, my parents did in 1980. I was only a year old. And we've been operating assisted living communities in Maine for the last 39 years. Over the last 20 years, we have been developing specialized memory care communities, and that's what we're proposing to create here in Madison. We have 14 separately licensed communities throughout the state. Brewer, Cape Elizabeth, Farmington, Holliville, Lewiston, Rockland, and Waterville. We currently care for over 600 residents, and we employ just under or over 400 staff people depending on the day. We provide three types of programs: assisted living, memory care, and independent apartments that have assisted living services. The project that we're going to be discussing here would be strictly memory care for people with Alzheimer's disease or related memory impairments. We've been recognized recently. We've been growing quite rapidly over the last 10 years. We've had a few recognitions over the last couple of years that we're particularly proud of. We were named the 2018 Maine Family Business of the Year from the Institute for Family Own Businesses. We were twice named Corporate Champion Award for our partnership with the Maine Chapter of the Alzheimer's Association. And then our most recent community that we've developed in two phases in Farmington, a memory care community and an assisted living and apartments. In Farmington, allowed us to receive the Business Attraction Award from the Greater Franklin Development Council last year, and then the Business Expansion Award just a few months ago. A few quick facts about Alzheimer's disease. I'm sure that many of you in the room have somehow had a personal connection, somebody in a family member or a friend of the family. But these are some statistics that come from the Maine Chapter of the Alzheimer's Association that are specific to Maine. So I think that's important. One of the reasons that, you know, we've been able to expand our memory care programs throughout the state is there's a tremendous need, and there's very, very few people or few organizations in Maine that are providing these services or providing them in the right way or providing them in the places that truly need them. So a few statistics, hopefully everybody can see there. We tried to make them as big as we could. There's believed to be over 28,000 people in Maine who are living with Alzheimer's disease currently. By 2025, they're expected to see a 25% increase in that as people live longer and medical care is more available and better. People are living longer, and the longer you live, the higher the probability of having Alzheimer's disease or another dementia. It's actually the sixth leading cause of death in the state of Maine, and so there's a 25% increase, so it'll be 35,000 by 2025. So to talk specifically about what we're planning to develop here in Madison, this is a rendering, architectural rendering of the building itself. It is a 42-bed specialized memory care community. They'll be... if we're able to start on schedule this spring, assuming everything gets approved, it will be completed by next summer, so it's about a 12-month development timeframe. The building is just over 20,000 square feet. There'll be 42 residents that we serve. There'll be 10 private rooms and 16 shared rooms. So of the 42 residents, 32 of the residents will be people that are subsidized through the Main Care program. One of the reasons that this particular area attracted us is that our Waterville community and our Farmington communities are completely full, or 100%. And between those two locations, we have over 20 people in each location on a waiting list that are Main Care recipients. So there's only a finite number of Main Care beds, as we call them, and the need significantly outstrips the supply. And it's really hard when, you know, what our life's work is, is taking care of residents and helping families, when you see a significant number of people who in some cases are in crisis and we can't help them. So in addition to the number of people that are on our waiting list in either Farmington or Waterville, we have a number of existing residents in both of those communities that are from Madison or from Scowhegan. Or as we look at our waiting list, there's a significant number of people, specifically people that are receiving Main Care, that are from this immediate area. So we decided, you know, there's probably no better area of need in our immediate vicinity, and so that's why we decided to come here and why 75% of the beds in this community will be serving residents on Main Care, which is higher than what our average, we run at about 50/50, private pay and Main Care company-wide. We will employ 28 to 30 permanent, full-time staff members. We have an internal policy of promoting from within, so we offer a lot of training and career opportunities and a full benefits package as well. So just some of the features of the building itself. Something that makes our physical plant a little bit unique is just some of the things that we do that we've learned from the development of other communities and best practices from other areas of the country. We have a lot of open-air spaces. There's actually an atrium in the middle of the building, an open-air atrium in the middle. There's secured outdoor walking paths. We have an onsite physical and occupational therapy center. We partner currently with Anders Skog and Home Health, where they actually lease the space, so we're able to provide occupational, physical therapy, speech therapy, and some skilled nursing services right on site. All of our common areas are monitored 24 hours a day by video. So outdoor areas and then interior, the courtyards and so forth are monitored as a safety precaution. All the residence rooms have private bathrooms. We try to develop, and I have some photos of our community that we developed in Lewiston and in Farmington. There's some photos up front, if anybody wanted to see what some of these common areas there is. A good example right there. We try to create as many purposeful areas as possible. That's a resident kitchen where we can do cooking activities. Residents can get their own coffee or juice or water. Some residents will find a lot of comfort in doing the dishes or wiping off the counters or things like that as a way to keep them active and doing things that they would be used to doing at home. We have living rooms, we have quiet rooms, television rooms, and so we try to create as many small spaces as possible so that people can kind of, you know, have their own area without having to, you know, the distraction of too many people. Because any time you put anywhere between 30 and 40 people in one building, the more individualized spaces you have, so the better. So that's a quick overview just of our building and our company. Again, you know, we... this is a real, you know, passion of ours. It's something that as we've grown, we've been specializing more and more in doing these memory care communities. Except we see a great need in this area, and we're really hopeful that we can come and provide this service and be the resource to the community.
Thank you, Matthew. Does anyone have any questions about the facility before we get into the specifics of the tax increment?
Because of the location of the property, will Madison be providing sanitary and water for that facility or will it be in Scowhegan?
So this is a rough map, and I know it's blown up, so it's kind of distorted. Here's Kent. Here's Tractor Supply. This is roughly the Scowhegan line right here. So it's East Madison Road. This facility right now is the Franklin Somerset Credit Union Office Building. So this is the location that we're talking about, and they're going to build, and there's a schematic out on the wall out front when you came in, they're going to build their own septic, and water is... is it a well or are you getting water from the town water? Any other questions about the facility?
Can you answer his question? Who's paying for the town water? He said Scowhegan to Madison. He didn't answer the question.
Is it Madison water?
Madison.
It'll be Madison water. The Madison Water District provides services for the jail, which is over there, and I believe the Madison Water District pump house is right there. Any other questions about the facility?
Why did you choose Madison again?
Well, since, as I mentioned before, this particular area, we looked at Scowhegan and in Madison, and we came upon this lot, and actually, as far as to capture the most people, the most convenient area, this was probably as good as, you know, we really were fortunate to find this particular lot so we can capture as many people from Scowhegan and Madison in the most convenient way. But it was just a matter of looking at lots, speaking to the town. We were, you know, really impressed with the openness and professionalism of the staff at the Town of Madison, so this was our first choice, and we were happy to take it under contract.
Nancy, you have a question?
This is kind of silly, but I'm wondering about the arrangement of the double rooms, the double occupancy. How do they arrange? Are they arranging a hospital room or...?
No, they... it's a single, you know, open room. It's a larger room certainly, and the beds, they'll see if there's a photo, because that's a single room there. Some of the rooms, depending on if they're in the corner of the building or in on one of the general hallways, there's a significant amount of room in between the two beds. Each person within a double room has their own nightstand, their own chair, their own closet, and then they share a restroom in that room. And there is a floor plan up front here, if anybody wanted to take a look, so you can see the actual square footage and the layout.
How much will these rooms cost?
Well, for 32 of the residents, they won't call it a cost, but they call it a cost of care. So the state, Main Care, takes care of the majority of the cost. And for a private pay room, that runs about $225 to $250 of that, and that includes all the services, the medication administration, the food, activities, transportation, and so forth.
Will the priority for housing go to the Madison and Scowhegan residents first? You said that there are a lot of people on the waiting list from this area. There are people from other facilities that are from this area. Would this facility be prioritized by those people first, priority?
I think it would... we don't set a priority per se, but it would be need-based. So if there's 50 people that need the service, you know, we would assess those 50 people and make a decision as they come. In some cases, it's a... if somebody qualifies, it's a first-come, first-served, whoever needs it, whoever has, you know, the ability and the timeframe to move in. But ideally, we figure will be our primary market catchment area would be Madison, Scowhegan, because as you start going south, we have our Waterville community; as you start going west, we have Farmington. So there's always a little crossover.
People would have to apply for this location as well, right? You wouldn't just automatically take this from the other locations?
No, yeah, every new resident applies and is assessed by one of our nurses and then...
Could you put the map back of where your locations are in the state, please?
Sure.
Are you planning on doing anything further north?
Well, we're in Brewer. That's as far north as we are. You know, we've looked at opportunities in the county. It's a little bit of a track. You know, we've looked at some places, you know, further down east, but right now, we don't have any plans to go further north than Brewer or Farmington.
Any other... I think I heard a comment up there. This is different from the Wood Lawn facility in Scowhegan.
Yes, we don't... we're not associated with Wood Lawn, which is a nursing home.
All the way in the back lawn.
Do you ever transfer your patients to the other facilities?
Within our organization?
Yes.
Yeah, we will do... sometimes if we're full. So say if we're in Holliville, and our community in Holliville is full, but a bed opens up in Waterville, we may transfer somebody or... and then with the idea that they would move back to where their first choice was once there's an opportunity.
Any other questions on the facility? Seeing none at this time, I'll grab that. Thank you. You can have a seat. Thank you very much, Matthew.
So in most of these communities where Woodlands has their senior living facilities, they have gone into these communities and asked for a tax incentive or a tax break in order to help fund the construction of the facility. When the Walters family came and spoke to the Board of Selectmen, they gave a very similar presentation. The Selectmen thought it was a very good project, and so when they asked for a TIF agreement, the Selectmen found themselves with a little back and forth, but they agreed to a 15-year term where Wood Lawn would keep a certain percentage of their taxes, and by keeping that tax money, it helps to finance the cost of building the project. I've got a sense that we're a fairly educated group here tonight. I'm not going to go into nitty-gritty details about TIFs, but I do have some basic information. Mr. Brady?
You might want to mention how much they're going to invest into this.
Right, right. So this is about a $5.5 million project. I don't know if many of you have had the opportunity to take a look or drive or visit the facility in Farmington. That facility in Farmington is much like their other ones. It's a very beautiful, well-cared-for facility. Now, that facility in Farmington is twice the size of this projected one, and it has senior living and memory care. This is just a memory care facility. The Farmington facility received a 10-year TIF from the Town of Farmington, and when the Selectmen talked with the Walters about doing a TIF for this project, they requested a little bit longer term. If you're familiar with the term, then we have the Backyard Farms. Backyard Farms is a 30-year TIF, so this one would be much shorter. Also, Backyard Farms covers about $50 million valuation, where this one would cover much less, probably between $4 and $5 million valuation. So the benefit of a TIF, there's a benefit to you, the taxpayer, and there's a benefit to the business. The benefit to you, the taxpayer, is you shelter the valuation. And as most of you know, when you get your tax bills, you see that they're broken into three categories: what we pay for education services, what we pay to the county taxes, and then what we pay for our municipal services. By sheltering an investment like this, I'm going to move ahead to a couple slides. I anticipated 50 turnout people, that's why I made 50 copies, so I apologize if you have to share. And for those of you who are sitting in the back, I know you can't see this. I have to split, and I'm about five feet away from it. So the benefit to you, the taxpayer, is by sheltering the valuation, it allows the town to receive more money from the state in education. It allows the town to get a reduction in the amount we pay to the county for tax, and we receive an increase of our revenue sharing benefit. So this is a formula that is put together. It's not exact, and it won't hold to be the same throughout the entire 15 years, but by sheltering, you, the taxpayer, will see a benefit of about $48,000 a year. That's more money that we receive from outside sources to pay for schools and county services, so that means that's less money we have to raise from you in taxes. The benefit to the business is that they get to keep a certain portion of their tax bill. As I mentioned, in Farmington, the arrangement that Select Board made was to allow them to keep all their taxes, 100%. Our Select Board agreed to a 15-year term with an 85% retention, which means, and again, this is just for example, if there's a $4 million valuation and the mill rate is $21.50, which it is right now, we hope it'll go down. We're working toward that end. They would pay $86,000 in taxes. They would retain, in other words, get to keep $73,000 a year in taxes, and then just under $13,000 would be retained by the town, which can be used for economic development projects. So that's the long and short of the TIF arrangements. Does anyone have any questions about that? Right there.
What is the... what are we getting for taxes on that land as it sits right now?
Right now, that land is valued at $27,000, so we receive about $400 a year in taxes on, maybe 500. Maybe 589. There we go. Good. You're not paying us taxes, are you? You seem to know that number pretty well.
I looked it up.
Yes, sir.
Is that $13,000 what they would be paying in coffee taxes per year?
This 13,000 is what the town would be receiving of their $86,000 tax bill.
Isn't that what their tax bill would be to the town?
No.
Their tax bill's 86,000.
Right, but we get...
The town receives the $12,900. They retain the 73, right?
You say the town receives, but it does not go into the general budget.
It does not go into the general fund. It goes into a separate account.
So I think you should be clear, and that's misleading the way you answered his question.
Well, I apologize for that. So the town receives it. We see...
Just answer the question, sir.
The town receives that money and retains it in a separate account, separate from the general fund. You're correct. But it can be used for projects that are approved by Town Meeting and that are approved by the state.
So you're using the term benefit without our loss of income, and you're not taking that into account. So this whole thing is skewed in, I consider, propaganda to get in your policy. Let's go through some numbers. Are you ready to get to that?
I'll try.
Okay. I'd like to take a look at the article that you had in Central Maine. Those are your statements on this policy. Would you be willing to do that?
I'll try.
All right. I had to really try hard to get through it. This is a 42-bed facility. Said 4.6 million is the cost. Now you're proposing that they're going to put in 5-point-something million.
We don't know what the final cost is until we build a number.
You just represented that we're going to... the value added is we're going to build a 5-point-something million-dollar facility.
When we run the numbers, we use this number, 4 million.
That's tax assessment.
That was our stat number.
We just stated to this group, to this quorum, that an added benefit to our community is they're going to invest 5-point-some-one million.
Okay.
In this statement, you said 4.6.
Okay.
Can you explain that discrepancy? Or would you care?
Well, I can certainly try, but I'm not really sure what... and let me just say, I don't know what difference it makes.
Now you're on guard. Just answer the question. I'm not asking you to be defensive. Just answer the question as a public official who made public statements in a paper of public record.
I would say, my answer would be, this project could range from 4.6 to 5.6 million. We don't know yet.
Is that a more accurate statement than the one that was in the paper record? I appreciate that. It also says a 42-bed senior living sign. Are there any restrictions for expansion in the 15-year period? In other words, could they multiply that by 10 times if they have space? Could they theoretically expand this to a 420-bed facility?
No, because the current plan as it is would utilize all the seven acres they're looking at.
So you can point to a specific restriction that would stop them from expanding this over the 15-year period?
This project is geared specifically to this parcel of land that is seven acres. If they wanted to expand...
I didn't ask you about the restrictions on the land area.
Now, hold on. I'm trying to answer your question.
I don't think you are, sir. I think you're trying to deflect.
You're not letting him.
I'm letting him go.
Let him finish answering the question.
This project is restricted to this parcel of land. If they wanted to add and multiply the facility, they would have to do it on a different parcel of land.
And it would not be in this project?
No. This project is for this...
So my question again, is there a restriction from them expanding within this TIF zone? Is there a specific restriction? Yes or no? That's a yes or no thing, sir.
Yes, by the main building and energy code.
Very good. I'm not sure what the whole other sidetrack was, but I think it was deflection. Say it again, is it 28 to 30? Yep, there you go. Personal attack, deflection, and blow up. Awesome. Says it is a 28 to 30 full-time jobs. You say, two times down in this article, it'll be more than 30 full-time jobs. First question, is it 28 or 30, and what is a full-time job?
How do you define a full-time job now?
More than 32 hours, so 30 full-time and a handful of our time.
Can you see where that's maybe a little shady, because most of us consider a 40-hour week? So let's... Wait for the point. Wait for the point. We're just... this is the first two paragraphs here. These are two questions. You know, you say 28 to 30, and then you say more than 30 full-time jobs. So which is it? 28, 30, or more than 30?
I think the commitment is 28 to 30 jobs. And again, they'll know better how many...
It's a full-time job.
They'll know better how many jobs will be part of this project when the project is done. Can I ask how many questions you have?
Sir, when I began, I asked you to go through this article.
Okay.
We're getting there, and I want to move... yes or no, awful awful awful. All right. You know, I'm not really trying to set you up. I don't think this is a good policy. As you do that, I find several holes in this, and I'd like to have a reason or at least address. Whether I feel good about it later, I don't care. I just won't get any.
Okay.
Right? You said it's a perfect fit for our community. All right, let's not get into that. It will provide upwards of 30 jobs. All right, now we've established that one is... the commitment is 28 to 30, not upwards of 30.
Semantics.
Well, it's semantics until you use it to steal from the neighbors.
Let's just let him finish his question.
You said in this UVAD statement that you weigh out all the potential for business like this. Can you show me a yardstick or a scale that weighs potential?
Whenever a town enters into a TIF, we look at two things. Does it provide jobs? Like if we were to TIF a solar array, that wouldn't... Like, if we were to TIF a solar array, that wouldn't make any sense, because a solar array doesn't provide jobs. So, this provides jobs. It also provides a needed benefit to residents in our community by providing the care that they provide. That's what I was talking about.
How do you weigh potential? Can I go buy a scale at the store and weigh potential?
No.
Okay. I don't think you've been honest with what it's gonna cost and what we're gonna lose. When you take millions of dollars out of our budget over your 15-year period, everybody else in this town has to make up any shortcuts. That's the point of this, and I really don't think in any public statement, or this paper, or any statement so far, that you've really explained to the people of this town how the TIF works, that even that $13,000 estimated isn't going into the general fund, and that will be made, have to be made up by the taxpayers. This is a wealth redistribution fund. I don't care what awesome sounding boss words you have. Statements have been made that business is good, so why am I paying my taxes when under law, I don't have to, I'm a disabled veteran, but I still contribute to my local and county government by not getting my refund for my taxes, because it's morally the right thing to do for me to support my local town. Why does someone, I make $50,000 a year, why does someone that, I believe, it's hard to find, but estimated $50 million in revenue, why are we giving that money to make more money? When business is good, they're, they're sold out, there's waiting on us. Can you answer that, or would you just like to say something on it? Why?
I appreciate your comments, and that's why we're doing this public hearing.
It was a question.
Why, why are we doing it?
Why?
The board of selectmen...
Explain to me why morally, I legally doesn't have to pay my local taxes, I still do morally because it's the right thing to do. Explain to me why it's the right thing to do to give rich people more money from my pocket and my neighbors to make more money? He's already said in all these articles and in public statements that business is good, they're sold out. You're putting it under the guise that we're helping elderly, we're helping people with dementia. Everyone in this room can agree that is a noble lot of a cause. This is not a nonprofit, they are making money. And then, you stand up here and say, well, the customers really aren't gonna pay this, the state well. Main Care is gonna pick up a lot of this for a lot of people. Again, wealth redistribution, that money is coming from the taxpayers. So, it doesn't matter who it's coming from, it is going to the for-profit corporation. This is not a nonprofit, this is a for-profit company. Why am I giving money to a for-profit company to make more profit? Answer that.
I'll try to do three quick statements. One, this is a town meeting where majority rules. Two, we don't have this tax revenue yet because this business isn't here in Madison. And three, this business, we anticipate and hope, will be here a lot longer than 15 years. And 16 years from now, they'll be paying 80-some-thousand dollars a year in taxes.
Is there any contract or restriction that they must stay here and that they can't sell? I mean, look at Backyard Farms, no restriction there, and they sold. So, we're not even dealing with the same people that made the agreement.
That's, that's...
But the TIF still stands, correct?
Correct. The TIF stands regardless of the rule of...
That sounds shady to you guys, I don't know what is, okay? This is what these companies do, they go through massive expansions with your money, and when, when business is looking good, they sell it off, make more money, and you're on the hook and they're not.
Okay, this is a selectmen's meeting under the guidance of Chairman Denziano, so I'm gonna turn it back over to him to see if there's any further questions. Are there any, are there any other questions? Yes, Phil.
In my little ranch house, I pay around $2,000 a year property tax.
Right.
And yet, we have that huge, brand-new, nice built business paying six times my little house pays. You know, that sounds like I'm paying quite a bit of money on my home compared to what that brick business is gonna pay. It's only paying six times more than I am for my little ranch house.
Thank you. I'd say go in and talk to Shirley and talk that through, that's all, I don't have that answer for you here. All right, are there any other questions? Yes.
When would this facility be completed?
I think it said the summer of 2020.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Could I make a motion to move the point, please?
We're in a public hearing, you can't. We're, we're taking questions and comments from the public. We'll shortly stop the public hearing.
I was only gonna second.
All right. All right, are there any other questions? Yes, Phil.
What happens if we say no to the...
Then they, the Woodlands facility has some choices to make.
Do they move away, or do they...
That's up to them, that's up to them.
Can we address the question?
Is your representative willing to answer that question?
That's, it is up to them when they, when they get the final vote, what they decide, that's not, that's not for us to decide here.
Can we ask him?
I intend, I mean, I don't know if he has an answer for you, because I'm sure he's just representing them.
Yeah, I don't want to answer that, I mean, everything, the last purchase, everything is contingent on a TIF, planning what approval, the necessary approvals, so...
Okay, any other questions? Excuse me, sorry. Is there any other questions? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed, looking for a motion to adjourn the selectmen's meeting, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Arnold.
No, adjourn the selectmen's meeting.
I don't want, I don't want the motion, do you care?
It's not a debate. All right, a motion to adjourn, and a second, all those in favor? All in favor, the motion carries. We will stop the town meeting. So, at this time, the selectmen's meeting is closed, and we will enter into the town meeting. So, Mr. Arnold, if I get you to shut off that projector, we're gonna raise the screen, the selectmen will take their places up here on the stage, and our town clerk will call
Good evening, I'd like to call this town meeting to order, having met our quorum for the special town meeting of 15 registered voters. To Ronald Burea Constable for the Town of Madison and the County of Somersault, State of Maine. Greetings, in the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Madison in said county and state, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet at the Madison Area Junior High School Auditorium in said town on Monday, the 11th day of May 2019, AD, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act upon Articles 1, 2, and 3 as set out below to wit. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Do I hear any nominations for moderator?
I'm Amy Hilton, second.
Are there any other nominations?
Move the nomination seat.
Nomination tab ceased, both voting to wish, those wish to vote for moderator. The moderator elected has been Amy Hilton, District 4. Aye, Ernest Hilton.
Aye, Ernest Hilton.
You swear?
You swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue as citizen thereof.
Continue as citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, Ernest Hilton.
Aye, Ernest Hilton.
You swear?
You swear.
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As moderator of this meeting.
As moderator of this meeting.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
They threw me off a little bit, the podium is usually over there. Yeah, so I got lost, as George suggests. So, those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Amy Hilton, I'm an attorney, I have an office a couple hundred yards away down from Corner Field in Western Avenue, of moderated a number of meetings, I won't call myself an expert thereof. I'm going to propose an Article 1A, which is that we adopt the rules of the Maine Moderator's Manual, Sixth Edition, 2005, as the rules governing this meeting. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your hands, down hands, all opposed, yes motion. I'm gonna also propose an Article 1B, which is to provide prior approval to anyone from outside town who may be requested to speak at this meeting. It may be that the gentleman representing Woodlands might be an appropriate candidate for that, if there's any anticipation that he'll be, that people want to speak with him in the course of this. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So what?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hands, down hands, all opposed, okay, that's a vote. The usual practice is for the moderator to read the warrant, which I will do, but you'll have to stand with me for a little while, because it's gonna take a little while. Can everybody hear me the way I'm speaking right now? Is there anybody who wants me to use the microphone? Okay, hearing none. Article 2, shall the voters of the Town of Madison, Maine designate the Woodlands Senior Living of Madison Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District, and adopt the development program for such district presented to the town meeting, and authorize the selectmen to enter into a credit enhancement agreement for the development program. Such designation, adoption, and authorization to be pursuant to the following findings, terms, and provisions. Whereas, the Town of Madison, being the town, is authorized pursuant to Chapter 206 of Title 30-A of the Maine Revised Statutes as amended, to designate a specific area within the town as the Woodlands Senior Living of Madison Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District, parentheses, the district, and to adopt a development program for the district, parentheses, the development program. And whereas there is a need for industrial and commercial development in the town, and whereas there is a need to provide continued employment opportunities for the citizens of the town and the surrounding region, to improve and broaden the tax base of the town, and to improve the general economy of the town, the surrounding region, and the State of Maine, and whereas implementation of the development program will help to provide continued employment for the citizens of the town and the surrounding region, improve and broaden the tax base of the town, and improve the economy of the town and the State of Maine, and whereas the town has held a public hearing on the question of establishing the district in accordance to requirements of Title 30-A MRS Section 5226, upon at least 10 days' prior notice published in newspaper of general circulation within the town, and whereas the town desires to designate the Woodlands Senior Living of Madison Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District, and to adopt a development program for the district, and whereas it is expected that approval will be sought and obtained from the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development, parentheses, the department, approving the designation of the district and the adoption of the development program for the district, now therefore, be it hereby voted by the town, Section 1. The town hereby finds and determines that the designation of the district and pursuant to the development program will generate substantial economic benefits for the town and its citizens, and its residents, including employment opportunities, broadened and improved tax base, and economic stimulus, and therefore constitute a good and valid public purpose. Section 2, the town hereby finds and determines that, A, at least 25% by area of the real property within the district as hereafter designated is suitable for commercial uses as defined in Title 30-A MRS Section 5223, Prentice 3, and B, the total area of the district does not exceed 2% of the total acreage of the town, and the total area of all existing and proposed development districts within the town, including the proposed district, does not exceed 5% of the total acreage of the town, and C, the original assessed value of all existing and proposed tax increment financing districts, including the proposed district, does not exceed 5% of the total value of equalized taxable property within the town as of the most recent April 1st for which such value is available, and D, the designation of the district and adoption of the related development program will make a contribution to the economic growth and well-being of the Town of Madison and the surrounding region, and will contribute to the betterment of the health, welfare, and safety of the inhabitants of the town, including a broadened and improved tax base and economic stimulus, and therefore constitute a good and valid public purpose. The town has considered all evidence, if any, presented to it with regard to any adverse economic effect on or detriment to any existing business, and has found and determined that such adverse economic effect on or detriment to any existing business, if any, is outweighed by the contribution expected to be made through the district and the development program. Section 3, pursuant to Chapter 206 of Title 30-A of the Maine Revised Statutes as amended, the town hereby designates the Woodlands Senior Living of Madison Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District as designated, described, and otherwise as more particularly set forth in the Woodlands Senior Living of Madison Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District Development Program as presented to the town meeting, which development program is hereby incorporated by reference into this vote and hereby adopted as the development program for the district. Section 4, pursuant to the provisions of Title 30-A Maine Revised Statutes, Section 5224, the percentage of increased assessed value to be retained as captured assessed value in accordance with the development program is to be established as set forth in the development program. Section 5, the Board of Selectmen or their duly-appointed representatives shall be, and each of them hereby is authorized, empowered, and directed to submit the designation of the district and the proposed development program for the district to the State of Maine Department of Economic and Community Development for review and approval pursuant to the requirements of Title 30-A Maine Revised Statutes, Section 5226. Section 6, the Board of Selectmen or their duly-appointed representatives shall be, and each of them hereby is authorized and empowered at his or her discretion, from time to time, to make such revisions to the development program for the district as the town manager may deem reasonably necessary or convenient in order to facilitate the process for review and approval of the district by the department, or for any other reason, so long as such revisions are not inconsistent with these resolutions or the basic structure and intent of the development program. Section 7, the foregoing designation of the district and the adoption of the development program for the district shall automatically become final and shall take full force and effect upon receipt by the town of approval of the amendment to the district and adoption of the development program by the Department of Economic and Community Development, without requirement of further action by the town, the Board of Selectmen, or any other party. Section 8, the Board of Selectmen or their duly-appointed representatives shall be, and each of them hereby is authorized and directed to enter into the credit enhancement agreement contemplated by the development program with Woodlands Senior Living of Madison LLC or its designee, in the name of and on behalf of the town, such agreement to be in such form and to contain such terms and provisions, not inconsistent with the development program, as the said Board of Selectmen or their duly-appointed representatives may approve. His or her approval to be conclusively evident by his... His or her approval to be conclusively evidenced by his or her execution thereof. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Um, seeing none. Yes?
I'd like to address a couple of the issues that this gentleman, uh, uh, rose during the public hearing portion of it. Um, he was, he wrote, uh, one of the things he commented about was the possibility of some enlarged expansion. If that should happen, there would be two things, or at least one, I'm sure of, is it would have to come before the Madison Planning Board. So they would have a chance to have a thorough review of it, to be sure that it would fit in the property. The other thing, I'm sure that any expansion would have to go before the state Health and Human Services, and they'd have to get a certificate of need. I may be wrong on that, but I'm sure any health facility where they, Medicare is providing, or Medicaid this state would be providing the benefits, would have to receive a certificate from the state. The other issue he, uh, the gentleman, uh, arose was, uh, the amount of taxes the town would lose on this thing. Well, if they, if they didn't have a TIF, there was about eighty-four thousand dollars in taxes. Presently, seventy to seventy-five cents of every dollar that we pay in property taxes essentially goes to the state, to the schools, and to the county. So out of that eighty-four thousand dollars, somewhere around sixty thousand dollars would go to the state and the county. The Town of Madison would receive a benefit of a little over twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-four thousand, would depend on the ultimate valuation placed on the property and the tax rate. If they get a TIF for this property, the way it's set up, uh, the chart that the town manager showed up there, we'd get about forty-eight thousand dollars more in education funds, uh, the town itself would. And it is just the Town of Madison. We don't have stocks, we don't have Brighton, we don't have Athens. So this is eighty, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars more to our benefit, right here, the citizens of Madison. The other thing he mentioned, I think there was somewhere around nine thousand dollars more in state revenue sharing because of our valuation. And that, there was plus, there'd be about thirteen thousand dollars out of that TIF money that the town itself could keep. So the town would end up with approximately seventy thousand dollars more by having this project. It could go to some other community, would get all these same kind of benefits. Or we could vote not give them the TIF. They might stay here, they may not, but assuming they stayed here, they paid the eighty-four thousand dollars, then we could get twenty to, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars in taxes from them. Now, I don't know about the rest of you folks, but somehow seventy thousand dollars sounds a heck of a lot better than twenty or twenty-four thousand dollars. And that's the bottom line. TIFs is a state program, it was enacted by the legislature. You can have a philosophical difference about it, but it does exist. And they're doing it all over the state. Uh, we've done it with a number of projects here in the Town of Madison over the years, and we've benefited very, very well from it. And I think for, to be concerned about the, uh, the, we've, uh, somebody paying, uh, not their share of taxes, and some business is going to make out like a bandit on this. They're in business, the TIFs was designed specifically for this kind of thing. They encourage this kind of business. They're going to have twenty-eight to thirty jobs, thirty-two hours a week, forty hours a week, I don't know. I don't really care. That's thirty jobs that are going to be good jobs, that will pay good money for the, for those people in this area. Rush to turn this down, thi- this is, seems like a real slap in the face. Stupidity.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? I'm going to call for a vote. Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote, and, uh, I believe you all have blue cards. So I need to, uh, so all those in favor of the article as presented, please raise your blue cards. Cards down, uh, all opposed. That's the three or four o's. Uh, so it's a vote. We have another article here. To see if the voters of the town will appropriate nineteen thousand, five hundred, sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents from undesignated fund balance to cover an overdraft of the amount approved for Article seven, quote, "other government," end quote, at the town meeting in June twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
Uh, what was this bill for?
So, I, I can address that, and, uh, whenever town meeting approves a certain amount of money, and in this case, it was for the money that we spend at waste management, uh, to handle debris and, and, and the products that we take there to the back gate of Nordwalk, and also that, uh, if you have a commercial hauler, pick up your trash. So we have a budget for what we spend at waste management. Whenever we find ourselves in a situation where we go over what the town has approved for that budget, our financial policy requires that we either hold a special town meeting immediately, or wait until the next special or regular town meeting to ask the voters to approve this overdraft, uh, from the general fund. In this particular case, this money was approved, uh, in two thousand seventeen's town meeting, so almost two years ago. If you recall, November of two thousand seventeen, October, November, we had a very bad storm, knocked over a lot of trees, many of you were without power for quite some time. We saw a significant increase in the amount of debris that was taken to waste management in December, January, February, and it forced us to go over budget. By the time we caught it, we'd already gone through two thousand eighteen's town meeting, and so this is the next opportunity to remedy this situation, and has to be done by you folks.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, down card, all opposed, that's a vote. And you think we need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor? All those opposed?